It is four o'clock. The call of the meeting, December 20th Metropolitan Transit Mission Meeting. We do have Dave Price with us, but he's at home taking a break. I see he's got his coffee mug there full of ice cubes and whiskeys.
I had to stay real quick. I couldn't get there because I'm where the exact site that Dude Ryan was. So I just.
There you go. All right, roll call finds everyone here except Sartell. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
None. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Most approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Consent agenda, item five through eight?
First roll.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passed unanimously. Is there anyone here for open forum or online for open forum?
No.
No? All right. General business, presentation by Bergen KDB of Fiscal Year 2022 Preliminary Audit Financial Is anybody here for that?
Aye.
Well, this will really be a quick meeting. I will go back to it when they come online. How's that?
Yep.
Item 10, Consideration of Classification and Compensation Study, Presentation and Recommendation.
Oh, we have a call-in user. That might be.
There was someone from the rack meeting that might call. That could be heard.
Is there anyone here from Gallagher Benefit Service?
Yeah, Andy said.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Yeah. He's sending the presentation and stuff.
Oh, wow. Yeah, but we'll wait.
We're just going to move past.
We gotta keep going.
I'll get up fast enough because I'm going to ride past. Call who? Someone's calling you. I have no idea. Do you need me to go? Yeah, I can step back. It does. It just delayed it for my works. That's far than I could figure out earlier.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to just back and keep going?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thanks very much, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and just present the overall study that we worked with the team on and everything on the classification compensation study. So it is something that is good practice to do, you know, every 10 to 15 years, kind of set up into that pay structure and then update the pay structure every year and then also kind of recalibrate that and test out the market and see how it is compared and what updates need to be happening. So we'll talk about the study background a little bit, the classification evaluation study, what the study was itself and then the findings or recommendations from that, at least for the non-bargaining unit positions in which the organization can implement. So overall, review the classification, see if there's any changes that's regarding the job titles, the title structure, make sure there's some internal equity that's aligned. Look at internal equity through a job evaluation method. The organization does need to have that for compliance with the Local Government Pay Equity Act in Minnesota, which has been in place since 1984. So you can do that every three years, is comply with that. Collect market data on the ex- from external sources. We looked at both published survey sources as well as published data, so I've been there. Develop salary structure from that, combining the internal equity with the market data itself. Keep moving on here. Classification structure, we were provided all the updated job descriptions. We reviewed all of those to make sure we understand that. That's necessary too, to make sure that we're getting the right market data, we're making the right matches to some of those jobs as well. We developed kind of a job family grouping and defined classification levels in that. That reflects the work that's being done now. Then hopefully, as new jobs are created or new levels are there or anything like that, that framework is there that can be added on to as the organization keeps moving forward. Because you might have jobs three, four, or five years from now that you don't have now in there. The framework helps ongoing equity, compliance with the Pay Equity Act, and administration of those new and changed roles in that regard. Job evaluation for internal equity, we're using a formal job valuation method. They have to have a point basis behind the scenes. That is a requirement from the Local Government Pay Equity Act. Internal equity establishes the job value hierarchy, assigns each of those jobs to a pay grade, and then helps we evaluate the review and those change positions. So within this methodology, I can talk a little bit about this decision-making, supervision, and then the complexity once we have all those. So we reviewed those. We worked with the team here to make sure that we had all of the right internal equity evaluations and applied that, and they also took that and customized a little bit themselves as well. And so on the next slide is just kind of a very high-level framework of what this is. We look at every single job description, every single essential responsibility, and the first step that you want to do is put it into the right decision band. And then part of this method that kind of separates it from other pieces is that we want to make sure we put it into the right band that describes the highest level decision-making that job is responsible for. Because sometimes you have jobs that are at various levels of different types of responsibilities, but what's the highest level? Why does that job exist? You want to make sure you have that at that level first. So we place that in the right band. Then we're going to take all those jobs within that band and say, now, is there any supervision responsibility? All those jobs that are supervising other positions are always placed in a higher grade. We need to understand that accountability, that responsibility, that role that's there. Then we have each band and grade, and then we're going to look at the complexity of those. That is where all job evaluation methods have a subjective nature to them. There is subjectivity to it because you're valuing the complexity of one job versus another job, et cetera. But the transition, what you all did here is kind of develop a more, another rubric of different kind of point values and looking at those across all the positions as well. And that was a very detailed approach that was worked with Sunny and make sure that we had all of those pieces in place there. So we can talk more about that if we need to, but overall, that's all the internal side. So we're all looking internal to the organization on the job family structure, internal equity. Now we're getting the market data, the other component of this. We sent a survey out to a bunch of organizations. In our experience, this is a decent participation rate. We had nine back. We had 16 that did not participate. We always try to check their websites and ask for some information from them as well. Sometimes they just don't participate. They don't have stuff available online. We want to make sure we're matching the right jobs based on the content, not just the job titles itself either. But we did still have a good, solid set of market data from comparable organizations with regards to the local market and transfer organizations as well. So in, we did that, we asked participants to match those 80% of the responsibilities so we get good, solid data back. We reviewed those. We made sure that the data is clean, is at the right levels. If the match seems off, we're going to ask for the job description to validate that it's the right type and level of worth that's matching. We need to make sure that we have at least five data points. We need to follow the Sherman Antitrust through the Department of Justice. So we need to have five data points to summarize the overall market. You can't compare just, you know, St. Paul Transit to Rochester Transit, to Duluth Transit, et cetera. 16 of those 31 jobs met that criteria from the custom survey itself. Okay? So in addition to that, there are some of the jobs here that compete cross-industry outside of just public sector. And so we want to look at that. We looked at comp data, Economic Research Institute, Mercer, Willstorf, Lawson. Those are large, national surveys that do these on an annual basis, very reputable survey sources that private sector organizations are going to participate in. So from that, we're trying to match all of those jobs. We were able to find job matches for all 31 of the benchmark jobs in that as well. And in that, we can give both a private sector, a local cut, state of Minnesota cut for a lot of those, and then also some of the public sector cut if we need to as well to supplement the custom survey. When we get that especially on with regards to the published survey sources through those surveys that we just mentioned here, we're looking at a couple of different adjustments that are being made to that data. One of those is going to be looking at for the cost of labor differentials that exist. Okay? So let's say we have the state of Minnesota data cut. We want to make sure we're adjusting that to the same cloud of market. So whether that's an up or a down adjustment, we use Economic Research Institute as an organization for that. They consolidate thousands of survey sources and thousands of market data points from across countries, saying, here's the cost of labor differential. So if we had to use a United States data cut, that St. Cloud is 3% lower on average than the United States as a whole. So we just multiply it, have it adjusted by, down by that 3%. So if we had a twin city data cut for the Metropolitan Council, we have a slight adjustment that's been made. The other one is we're aging all this data forward. Market data itself, whenever you collect it, is immediately dated. It's old. So we want to make sure it's being reflective of in the future. So we're looking at that. We use an organization called World at Work. They publish an annual salary budget survey. And this last year was much more volatile when it comes to actual pay. Market trends were about 4.6% at that point. So we aged all the data forward, actual pay by 4.6%. Salary structure was 2.5%. So we aged it all forward to January 1 of 2023. So knowing that the salary structure is not being dated, it is in the past. When we're comparing the market data, we're looking at that 50th percentile. That's the middle point of the market. So we've got 100 numbers going across, that would be number 50. We want to make sure that we're pointing at the middle point and then build a pay structure around that amount. So we're looking at anything plus or minus 5% is considered highly competitive with the market. 5 to 10 is competitive, and you get above that, you might have some misalignment with the overall market. However, we're looking at those on, well, you all have the data for individual jobs. We're looking at this as a whole. This is say, hey, how, here is how everything is comparing and contrasting to develop a pay structure from that. Because the individual jobs may be misaligned, but that could be due to the tenure, performance, recruiting, you know, labor market, whatever that is for individual jobs on those bases as well, but using as a whole to develop a pay structure. So overall, we found that the Metro Bus is highly competitive at the 50th percentile of the market. So in the light blue column, we have the actual comparison of actual pay, so or the average pay if you have multiple incumbents within that. So if we look at custom data only, you're about 5% below. Published data, overall Metro Bus is 1.4% higher. And then for all combined data across all 31 of those jobs at an aggregate level was 0.8% higher. So overall, across those jobs, highly competitive. Now, there's going to be individual jobs that might vary a little bit more, but it has to do with, you know, people in a, who's the market, all that kind of stuff as well. Trying to use that to build a pay structure. Now, if we look at the salary range structure in the dark blue there.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. In the dark blue there, we did find that the minimums are a little bit higher. Your midpoints are spot on the market where they need to be, and the maximums were a little bit lower. The salary ranges at Metro Bus were a little bit narrower, so a little bit less distance between the mid to the max than the typical market. So that's why the mid is a little higher, the max is a little bit lower. Okay? So overall, the framework is there. Now the next step is to take that market data with the internal equity calculations, ratings that we made, and we're going to blend those together to build a pay structure. Let me go to the next slide. So what we do for this is called, it helps with the compliance with the Local Government Pay Equity Act. So we're always looking at jobs with regards to the responsibilities, not the people in them or anything like that, and not letting the market strictly dictate where it's being paid either. So we use an order, a process called that line of best fit, a regression analysis, to build the framework and the basis for the overall pay structure at that 50th percentile within it. So on the next slide, we have the graph of that that just shows as a visual how we're blending those together. On the X-axis, the horizontal axis, is the internal equity ratings. There's point values behind the scenes. The Y-axis is a dollar value of the job. So in the red, you can see the Metro Bus average salaries within there, and in the blue, you can see what the market 50th was. So overall, just slightly below the market. So the recommendation would be then, let's use that blue line to build the basis of the middle point of your, the new salary structure. So the Metro Bus has the ability to pay below that market rate for new employees at the minimum, move up to the market rate, and then pay above as well. So you're building a framework around that. We recommend building an overall pay structure. This is union positions, we have to go through negotiations and all that, but the recommended structure using a 57% range spread, so it's a little bit bigger than what might exist right now, but there's 11 steps within it to encompass that movement between there. And there's equal dollar amounts between those steps. So step one to two might be $1,000. Step 10 to 11 would also be $1,000. It's just equal steps within that, not percentages in that way. So we calculated the cost for placing employees into that on this following slide. These are all the non-union employees. So this is what we're saying is that, based on the current pay, what is the next closest step within the new structure? And then also assuming and making the adjustment that any employee with one-plus-year in the position should be at least at step two in the pay range, in the pay structure. So that would take about $94,000. That's an annual cost as an addition to the overall payroll, which is about 3% of the So the recommendations are to, for the board, is to adopt the decision band method. That's for compliance with Local Government Pay Equity Act. That would be something, once that report is submitted, one of the board chair would assign that in there. Implement the salary structure for non-union positions and then maintain these through ongoing practice. There are some annual, biannual policies and activities that should be done. So on an annual basis, continue to review the internal alignment. As jobs change, review them, make sure they're placed in the right spot. Update the salary structure on an annual basis by a fixed percentage based upon the market movement so you don't end up being way behind the market three, four, or five years from now. And then every three to five years, do the compensation portion of this to go back out to the market to kind of recalibrate that pay line and validate that you're still in the right spot overall competitively. So some of those small adjustments. That's the overall project. Any questions?
All right. Members, any questions?
I have one question.
Yep.
Or actually, two. First, maybe I missed at the beginning, I was trying to pay, pull attention, I'm not seeing the graph, but I can hear what you're saying. So is total compensation, is part of that correct? Benefit, health insurance, retirement? Is that, when looking at the comparison, is it total compensation?
No, this is for the pace, the base pay structure, the annual pay.
This is just our, just wages.
Yep.
Okay.
Just wages, not total compensation.
Correct. That's correct.
Oh, I mean, is that, when looking at that, I mean, isn't that a factor in overall? And obviously, when things change, especially, especially in this market, it's not always, not always pay. Sometimes it's not even the compensation, sometimes flexibility, you know, family leave, all those other types of things. So how does that, how does that really give you a good, good indication then?
The scope of the study was to make sure that the pace pay, the framework, the pay range itself is competitive to be able to recruit individuals into comparable positions with the market. The benefits aspect of it is always going to fluctuate based on the value that we all individually place on what those benefits are for whether that's leave or whether that's the health insurance or whether that's the coverage and the plan design or anything like that. Those are going to fluctuate whether or not it's comparable and competitive is part of the consideration to make sure that, hey, we're paying 90% of the premium of what other folks are covering. We're offering 12 six days, we're offering X number of days PTO. Here's a flexible spending account that those are present. Yes, they need to be considered and they are part of the overall picture. Yes, this, but this project was focused on.
This study was just focused on the base wages.
Yep.
And just an additional.
I know that, I'm just trying to figure out how that has an effect, maybe even on, you know, on comparison. Obviously, there's a, it's a big part of it for a lot of folks and probably at different ranges. You know, obviously, new young employees aren't as concerned about retirement, folks that are, you know. It's just, just a question again, it's just, it is, I think, a pretty important piece. I mean, obviously, looking at that. But the other question I have is, you know, you comparison to the, is there the data from that cost of living piece? You said that's right at St. Cloud. I mean, how is St. Cloud divided up? I know when we do our city compare, so we just went through a whole study, but we looked at the total compensation package, but we also look, we call a city, and obviously for us, there are several cities here, Sterns and Benton County, and for us, there's Benton and Sherburne, and even cost of living is different from Sherburne versus Sherburne, actually considerably by housing area. I mean, is that factored in also?
The, so the figure that we use is called cost of labor, which is indirectly going to include cost of living, but basically it's like, hey, here's what an accountant is paid in this area versus what an accountant is paid over here. So the cost of labor is a recommended figure to use because it has a more consistent trend year over year. Cost of living is going to be, is going to go, be much more volatile, go up and down. We did a project out in Watford City, North Dakota, at one point in 2012, and at that point in time, it was the highest cost of living place in the entire country. And it's not that case anymore because it was all part of the oil fracking that was going on at that, at that point, but it's not there anymore. But the cost of labor piece of that, that comparison is going to have a more consistent trend. And for building a pay structure, you want to have some of that consistency there and not have it be fluctuating too much up and down. So the cost of labor is indirectly going to be, sorry, cost of living is going to be indirectly included within it, but the best practice for adjusting the pay structure and building that is off the cost of labor figure.
And that's, and that's why I'm trying to see how it varies a lot. I mean, you know, the city of St. Cloud itself has three counties, and I mean, the cost of living, and if that's also part of cost of labor, cost of labor would be a little different statistic too for those three counties because cost of labor, Sherburne versus Sterns would be a little different because, I'm just wondering how you do that too. I mean, obviously, St. Cloud's piece, now obviously we've got Sartell, Wade Park, Sacra, now at least two of those cities are all in Sterns and one is, you know, in Benton, but from our whole service area, St. Cloud comprises three, but it's that. I know we have this, we have this challenge at St. Cloud often, we're talking about housing piece because there's a pretty significant variance between Sterns and Sherburne on the cost of housing, just immediate price house. And so if that's factoring in labor, I'm just trying to figure out how is that, is it skewed in any ways by the metropolitan area or St. Cloud's MSA itself?
Yeah, so I think the basis we would have used would have been the St. Paul, that's our, St. Cloud MSA area. I can double-check within the spreadsheet. I know we have it within the calculations when we go into the Economic Research Institute's portal and say, hey, here's my base city, and then here's the different data cuts and geographic locations for comparison to that base city, which we would have used as St. Cloud. And I can double-check if it's St. Cloud MSA or what the, how it's labeled properly in there, but that's the base city that we would have used as the comparison.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's all right.
All right. Anybody else?
I have a question or maybe a comment. I'm, I'm not in favor of voting on this today because this is the first wage study that I've ever seen the first day and voted on it the first day. I have to be blunt. I want some time to look at this. That's just me. Because I have some other questions that maybe get answered offline. But I have a lot of questions. I mean, typically, when we get wage studies, we have time to look at them as a city and some other boards that I serve on, and I'm not comfortable doing that yet.
We also haven't had the staff evaluate and tell us what they think.
Right. Yeah.
So Commissioner, just curious, like, what would you like to see so that we can provide that for you?
If I can?
Yeah.
Last time we did the wage study, I had a list of all the, all the, all the job titles, salary ranges, and how much they changed. I want to see the outlineers. I want to see what the total dollar is.
I have some of that information.
Okay. I mean, that to me is general overview.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm not, I'm not going to vote on a general overview.
No, I wouldn't expect you to. So just a few things, and we'll provide that again.
I want it similar to what we saw last, because as a city, that's what we see. We sell the job classifications, the job titles.
With the points.
Yep, and we do have those things.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Just to, just to kind of, again, we were pretty close overall. So the recommendation would be to like, put every non-union employee to the next step. What that, what that calculates out to on average is a 2.3% increase per person within that. So overall, all union is 2.3%.
I remember the last time we did, we had some outlineers that were double digits and then that's all.
Yep, and so there's two, there's two people in positions that are, one is a 4.3 and one is a 4.7% increase. Those positions are operations manager and mechanic. It's, it's one individual in each one of those roles that would give the 4.3 and 4.7. And then there is an outlier, it's the fuelers. The fuelers, we currently have three fuelers, and those fuelers would see an increase. One is, one individual is 10.79, one is 13.63, and one is 16.94. For a total amount, just the fuelers increase comes to just under 22,000 for them to get that increase. But I will say regarding the fuelers, they are one of the lowest paid positions in the organization, and so normally, I would never recommend that kind of an increase, but in this case, I do because, again, they're, they're one of the lowest paid positions, I believe. I think, we believe that they've been underpaid for quite some time, and it's one of the hardest positions to fill. So, yeah, so we've, we've struggled with filling the position, and then we've struggled with retaining once we do fill it. So if, I want to say over the last year, we've probably always had one of our four positions vacant. And the reason why there's only three that we're talking about right now is because one position is vacant, with I think a start, hopefully identified for January, but it has been a very difficult position to fill and to retain people in. It is a CDL licensed position.
Oh.
But it hasn't been at the same level as other CDL licensed positions. And so I think that is part of the reason why we're struggling with attracting and retaining people is not having that consideration in the wage that that position is paid right now.
And there's no drop dead on this, drop dead date. I mean, we don't have to do it today.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, because I just, I feel, I, I'm used to working on the city side where I've done wage studies before, and we have a lot of time to look at it, not today.
Yep.
So, because I want to see the details.
Yep.
The report was completed, and we just wanted to present the information to you as a board now that the Gallagher has completed.
Well, it said recommend data.
Yeah.
I thought we were going to approve that today, and I don't want to do that. That's just me speaking.
Yeah, that's what we recommend, not to say that you guys have to follow our recommendation. We just presented the information to you as standard protocol, and our recommendation would be to have the commission approve, but that's just a recommendation, it's not mandatory, but it's just a recommendation.
Because the places I've worked before.
If we can put it off till next month, and maybe you can, it'd be nice to have it on paper instead of, so we can look at it a little easier, I think.
Do you want the presentation on like slideshows or just this detailed information?
Just that detail.
Okay.
Also, I think you analyzed the whole thing and let us know what your opinion is too.
Yep.
But I think, like Commissioner says, to put it in an order of Ryan was getting this and now he's getting that or whatever, you know.
I don't even need names, just position. That's usually what we see.
Yeah, by points.
And do you want the full scale or do you want max and min?
I'd like to see the full. I'm used to seeing.
Yeah, I don't think it takes that much more to break it down.
Actually, if you have it broken, it's easier to give you the full thing. It's to give you the sum.
Yeah, I'd rather just lay it on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, good. All right, anything else on that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll talk later, if we need to break that down at all.
Thanks.
Do we have item nine yet?
We do. Andy, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
All right, then you're on for the presentation for the preliminary audited financial statements.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having me here to present here this afternoon. I'm going to share my screening. I believe we also have a copy of our presentation that was provided. Hopefully, it's through OK. But wanted to begin just by highlighting our audit reports. So just wanted to remind everyone what our role as your auditor. It is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. But wanted to begin just by highlighting our audit report. So just wanted to remind everyone what our role is as your auditor. It is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. So they're cutting the checks, making payroll, taking in the revenues and receipts of, and ultimately recording that information onto the commission's general ledger. And it's our job as your auditor to come in, test, examine, look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements, and ultimately give you, give an opinion as to whether the financial position presents fairly in all material respects. And we are providing a clean or unmodified opinion, that's the best that we can give as your auditor. I just wanted to be sure that we are, you know, understanding that this is a preliminary result. We are just awaiting pension information from the state of Minnesota that has to be incorporated into your financial statements before we can ultimately finalize and issue the report. But based, based on our audit work, that's where we anticipate our opinion landing. We also issued our report in accordance with government auditing standards. This report has us take a look at internal control over financial reporting, also requires us to look at any compliance-related matters. And we did have one finding to report in relation to internal control, and that is a lack of segregation of accounting duties. And this relates to certain accounting functions where there is overlap, or certain individuals having multiple access to perform multiple accounting functions, which isn't unusual with a finance department of this size, and it is a similar finding to what has been received in the past. Also wanted to highlight the report that we issued on the uniform guidance. The commission did expend federal awards of about $4.7 million this year, and that required or triggered a compliance or a single audit related to federal programs. And the two major federal programs that were tested this year was the Federal Transit Cluster and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So we are required to look at allowability of expenditures charged to those programs, as well as internal control over the applicable compliance requirements. And we had no findings to report on compliance or internal control, so a clean report on federal programs. The last report that we issued, or issued an independent auditor report on was Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor has us take a look at certain legal provisions and report any non-compliance that comes to our attention as a result of our audit procedures. And we had no findings to report in regards to Minnesota legal compliance. Lastly, we also issued our communications letter that includes all other required communication in accordance with audit standards, includes our financial analysis and also an emerging issues section. But wanted to highlight some of the charts and graphs from our communications letter and the financial analysis section, and wanted to first highlight inventory levels. And just to highlight here, the inventory levels are at a high point this, for 2022, at $291,000 at the end of the year. Next, wanted to highlight operating revenues here over the last five years. And in 2020, in 2022, there was an increase in operating revenues of about $1.4 million or about 8%. And the majority of that increase related to federal operating grants, which increased $3.7 million this year, with the pandemic-related funding being utilized and spent here during the fiscal year. That was offset by a decrease in state grants, a decrease of about 10% to $1.2 million, with a larger fixed route and dialer rate state grants available in the prior year. And the passenger fares also increased with charging bus fares again here for the fiscal year. That resulted in an increase of about $870,000 for 2022. Next, wanted to provide an overview of total revenues and expenses, and this is at the full accrual level here. Total revenues increased about $293,000 or 1.5%. And the operating revenues increased, excuse me, total revenues and capital grants increased up to that $19,960,000 level, with total expenses at $18,233,000 compared to $16.2 million in the prior year. The increase in expenditures relate to increased amounts for positions, hours worked, some contract restructuring, as well as insurance benefits and other benefits. There's also a decrease in fuel expense, with an increase in services, again, with pandemic-related decreases in back to 2020 and 2021. Next, I'd like to highlight the financial position and changes. Financial position as well as some other groups here, including the net investment in capital assets, as well as the unrestricted cash balances. With current year operations being positive for the year, we're seeing that top line or orange line increase, that's the net position, total net position for the entity, which increased from $44.2 million up to $45, almost $46 million here at the end of the year. You're seeing the net investment in capital assets decrease, going from $30.7 million down to $28.6 million. And that's due to current year depreciation expense. The current year operations did add to the general fund and the fund balance there at the end of the year, but those dollars have not yet been invested into the related capital assets. So there are amounts being set aside for future capital needs from that surplus for 2022. Also, with parent year operations, we're seeing increases in the cash balances there, which increased from $16.5 million to $19.4 million for 2022. And again, the unassigned portion of net position increased from that $9.4 million to $11.5 million for 2022. Now, when we look at the equity position, there are amounts that are assigned for specific purposes, and the majority of the increase that we're seeing here is in amounts for capital purchases, which increased from $2.4 million to $3.9 million, again, related to the surplus for the year. And next, here, just wanted to also highlight capital expenditures over the last five years. So we are seeing those decline, and again, with pandemic-related impact back to 2020 and 2021, and related grant funding available, those were at low points during those points in time. And again, we're at a low point here for 2022 with those capital expenditures to, expected to pick back up here in future years. Next, wanted to highlight the operating revenues by source and the proportion to total revenues, and we're seeing the state grants decrease from 67% down to about 56%. And that's due to the significant federal dollars that were utilized this year, which increased the federal grants from 12% to about 20%. And again, passenger fares coming back online here for 2022, which represented 5% of total revenues compared to 0% with zero charges for fares in the prior year. Next, looking at the allocation of the operating expenses, those were fairly consistent from 2021 to 2022, with the fixed route and dialer ride related operations at 55% of total expenses. There was a little bit of an increase in amounts towards, or allocation towards vehicle maintenance and facility maintenance and general administration fairly consistent with the prior year. That's a high-level review of our independent auditors' reports, as well as our financial analysis. And next, we'd just like to open it up for any questions.
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions, commissioners, anybody? Dave?
Not for me.
Okay. And this is just preliminary, so all we're going to do is wait for the final?
Yep, we wait for the final, I'll bring you back. We won't do a presentation, I won't have Burton KDB come back, but probably April, would be my guess, is when the.
So you don't need anything from us tonight, just for this?
Nope.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having me.
Yep. All right, item 11, consideration of Metro Bus parking policy. Sunny.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So before you today is a very short and concise added policy under our benefits and insurance, and it is related to parking, basically bringing forward a policy that indicates that Metro Bus will provide free parking to all employees during their scheduled work hours. For the most part, we already do that right now, obviously, parking here, we've got plenty of parking for staff. We do have, I think, four parking spaces at the Transit Center for staff. Our Mobility Training Center is the one location that we don't currently have any free parking that our staff can park at. So currently, our staff that are located and work regularly down at the Mobility Training Center are paying for parking. We're trying to have a consistent benefit for all employees so that everybody has the same access to the same parking. And so that is the reason why we're bringing forward the policy to provide free parking to all employees.
Where would, where would those parking stalls be?
Actually, what we are proposing, or we're working through the procedure, but what we would do is we would provide a maximum per quarter reimbursement, and they would be able to then purchase a parking permit.
Wherever they want to. If they want to walk a mile, they can make money.
Yeah, and so we're looking at setting that to match, like, the lowest reasonably located lot to the Mobility Training Center, and then if somebody chooses those to get a pass in the Capital One parking ramp instead, they can put their reimbursement toward that, but it wouldn't cover that at 100%.
I didn't think St. Cloud charted for parking.
Not until nights and weekends, so.
I've been going down there at night cutting those meters off.
I couldn't help it, Dave.
Eighteen hour hours. People hit the bus, turn into a food and beverage parking.
It's hard getting those quarters out of that machine, but.
Also, just to note, commissioners, we have been working with MINDOT for quite some time to try and get this to be an approved, recognized expenditure. In the past, it had not been. We do have documentation now from MINDOT that they've changed their position on that, and we've got supporting documentation. So it would be an approved 80% reimbursable expenditure through MINDOT.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Through the discussion.